Okay, we're on, uh, I know someone that would get carried over, but, uh, we are on air and appreciate everybody joining us, as well as those that are here in the Capitol Chamber for some evening, for Monday, December 12th, this is what happens before Christmas. So, uh, all please try to take attention and please leave. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, for the many blessings we have received from our city during this holiday season. Take us with the help of our neighbors, look out for those who need, answer the call that we get, or those that are in need. Also, as we enter this holiday season, it's never far from our minds that we have many military families here within our city, many of them with spouses, or before our lives, but those through this holiday season, be with those families. As always, watch out for those in public service or in place fire that serve us each very day during this holiday season.
The leaders through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I just, uh, need to start with a couple of presentations and, uh, if I could get, um, Robert Redmond and Travis Redmond to join me up here. We had one in front of you, but I don't think she's gonna make it this evening, so. Set this one aside. I will say that when I got here this evening, first thing I did was open these packets because I've given these awards out before, but I have never actually read, had the time to read what was behind the award that you're giving. The award for the two Redmond brothers here is a, is offered by the President of the United States. This is not an award to be taken lightly, and it is a sign of leadership for, not only for the city of Pecosin, but for them personally, because one of the hardest things that I've come to find is when the youth of our nation have time to volunteer, what it adds to their leadership potential, and then what they give back to the community. What I've seen here is nothing more than stellar. I applaud both of you. I've seen both of you volunteer, and it wasn't just up there in the pew at church, okay? But, uh, it, the, uh, the hours that are logged here for this award are phenomenal. Let me read this letter to everyone. This is from the President, Barack Obama, and it says, "Congratulations on receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award, and thank you for helping to address the most pressing needs in your community and our country. In my inaugural address, I stated that the new era of responsibility, a recognition on the part of every American that we have duties to ourselves, our nation, and the world. These duties do not begrudgingly accept, but rather seize gladly, firm in the knowledge that there is nothing so satisfying to the spirit than giving all to a difficult task. Your volunteer service demonstrates the kind of commitment to your community that moves America a step closer to its great promise. Our nation faces the most challenging economic crisis in a lifetime. We will only renew America if we all work together. Individuals, the private sector, and government must combine efforts to make real and lasting change, so that each person has the opportunity to fulfill his or her potential. While government can open more responsibilities, it is up to each of us to seize those opportunities. Thank you personally for your devotion to service and for doing all that you can to shape a better tomorrow for our great nation." So this award is to Robert Redmond, this is the gold award, for over 200 hours in a single year of community service. And I will tell you that in addition to this certificate, that there is a gold medal associated with that, and I don't know if people at home can see that. A tremendous, tremendous medal, a great opportunity, and I'm glad to offer this to you.
Thank you.
Okay? And Travis, it's kinda like being at the Olympics, so you are the bronze medal winner, and this is your certificate for your hours of volunteer service, and also the bronze medal, again, for your volunteer service. And we appreciate everything that you've done and what you mean to this community. So thank you very much. Would either of you like to address to the public?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to thank my parents, first of all, for being there for me along the way and supporting me through it all, and, um, being the chauffeurs and the managers and keeping track of my schedule and things like that. And I'd like to thank you for handing me the award, and the President for also giving me this award.
I'd just like to say that it's pretty great to, uh, serve for this great community that we live in, and I think this, this award means a lot to me and my family and my parents and, and everybody else in this community that, uh, that helped me along the way.
Thank you very much. Hey, I look forward to seeing y'all out there in the community doing more, uh, because I know that you will, and I know that your mother will make sure that you do. But, uh, we do appreciate it, and I don't want to shortchange you in any way, so Travis, I think there's some other things in that envelope, and Robert, and one of this letter I think came out of that package. Okay? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Hey, would you like to, would you go through and shake the hand with Travis? Okay. Good way to start out the summer evening. Next, uh, we'll move on to audience for visitors, and ask for a special presentation. This is the audit, I'm sorry. This is a audit presentation, a very important presentation for our city, and first, uh, go forward and present this.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and all others present tonight. I am pleased to be here tonight to report the results of the June 30, 2016 audit. So first, we were engaged to audit the financial statements of the city. In addition to the city, we do audit the related components of the School Board and the Economic Development Authority, which are included in a separate column within these financial statements. In addition to just auditing the financial information presented in front of you, we do audit the city's compliance with the state laws and regulations and their compliance with federal grants. So just to jump right to the conclusion, um, in performing our audit, um, we did have clean audit opinion on the financial statements. Additionally, we had unmodified opinion, which is clean opinion, on your compliance with laws and regulations, and additionally, we had a clean audit opinion on the single audit, so your compliance with federal grants. Now, in conducting our audit, we are required to gain an understanding of the internal control environment, and in doing that, if we were to have any matters that we identified as deficiencies in internal control, we would be required to report those to you. Additionally, when we conduct our compliance testing, if we were to have any matters of non-compliance, either in our testing of the federal laws and regulations and grants, or the state laws and regulations, then again, we would be required to report those to you. Now, those are reported in a separate schedule in the back called the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, and we did have one matter that we reported this year related to state laws and regulations. Now, in conducting our audit, there are a few additional matters that I am required to tell you as part of our audit. So if there were any significant changes that changed the presentation of those financial statements compared to last year, we would be required to report those to you. There was nothing of a significant magnitude that was new this year, there were minor changes in the accounting principles, and there were no changes in the county's policies. Included within these financial statements are some estimates that really have some management judgment behind them, or they were prepared by the actuary. Those significant estimates really relate to the allowance for doubtful accounts on your, what you're gonna collect from your taxes receivables, the depreciation expense as it's really based on the useful life of the assets that you have and what you predict those useful lives would be, and then your pension liabilities, as well as your retirees' healthcare liabilities. So those are computed by an actuary and do have some significant assumptions primarily associated with the mortality and how long employees will live to receive those benefits. If we were to have any audit adjustments during the audit, we would be required to report those to you, and I'm pleased to tell you that there were no audit adjustments, as well as there were no minor adjustments that the city did not record. Additionally, if we were to have any disagreements with management or difficulties in conducting our audit, we would have to tell you about those, and again, I'm pleased to tell you we did not have disagreements with management, nor were there any difficulties that we encountered in conducting our audit. Occasionally, if there are those difficulties or disagreements with management, they might reach out to another CPA firm. We call that opinion shopping. Again, there was nothing of that nature during the results of our audit. At the conclusion of our audit, we do require management to represent to us that the financials presented in front of you are complete and accurate, and that there are no material misstatements in them. We also ask that they tell us that they've provided us all the information that was available and that we have asked for. Management did sign and return that letter to us at the conclusion of the audit. In order to conduct your audit, we are required to be independent. Really, that kind of is, is very similar to your conflicts of interest, that means there's no bias that would cause us to give you an opinion that you didn't warrant. So we are independent with the city, as well as the School Board and the Development Authority. Just to let you know, any changes that you might see coming up in future years, next year, you will be required to disclose any significant economic tax abatement programs that you have, and any dollar amounts that you pay out, um, associated with those tax abatement agreements. That is something that's never really been required to be disclosed before. And then in two years, you will see another liability come onto the face of the financial statements, if there is a liability associated with any retiree healthcare benefits that you have. So those are two of the pending changes that you might see coming out in the next couple of years within the financial statements. Really with that, that concludes the result of our audit presentation. We do like to thank the finance staff of the city, schools, and just the help we received all around, 'cause our audit does encompass more than just the finance department. So with that, I will be glad to take any questions that you might have as a result of the audit.
I don't think anybody wants to ask if you have a clean audit.
Okay.
I will follow up with what's coming, your first statement on tax abatement.
Yes.
Can you explain what that would be?
Sure. Um, right now, there's, again, no disclosures related to any tax abatement programs. A common program that you have within the city, or pretty much in the whole state of Virginia, would be elderly tax abatements. That does not qualify under the disclosures here, because really what they're looking to disclose is anything related to economic development. So if you had, if you were trying to bring new business to the city of Pecosin, and you offered them certain abatements to their taxes for the first three years as an incentive to get them to come into the city, those are the types of things that are required to be disclosed. Any types of agreements you have of that nature, and then any dollar amounts of tax abatements of things that would be related to economic development, similar to that scenario, you'd be required to now disclose those in your financials. And again, it's, it's a very generic disclosure, you do not specifically have to list the company and the dollar amount, they do want to know the type of programs you have, the total dollar amounts that you gave in tax abatements. So again, it's not, there's some disclosure, it's not complete and absolute full disclosure, but the city could choose what level of detail that they would like to include.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that. But even on our call, if you want to take a, working all year and, uh, be aware, I appreciate, so thank you. Anything else? If we've not, thank you very much, I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
And so, who's as well, or, uh, what else? And if there's one person who's, we appreciate your service so much.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you very much.
All right.
Hey, now, if, 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 if anybody in the audience can see, if you have a question or a personal issue, you have a question. If not, I'll close it, I'll get to the rest of the room. All right. Have to be approved, and that's the one that I'm thinking. Second, question made, so I can give you a, if, if you have a question, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Uh, first item under new business is a resolution approving the design with Greek route, lighting the project. I would ask our city engineer and the Rogers to come and present both of the next two auditions.
Uh, what you have, uh, with, uh, to with, just a root tree, road lighting. Uh, what you have, according to the scene, is a resolution, a standard resolution, uh, that the doc requires more to continue the project. The design is the same as it was, uh, as we, as was discussed in a city council work session this summer, and a public hearing, and an office for citizens to come in. Basically, uh, the resolution would approve the idea of that three lane reversible road concept that was discussed just previously, and allowed the doc to go forward, but it also required the doc take the lead in acquiring any runway that would be needed.
I don't know if anybody has a question left.
Also, I think you will start, so you've probably seen the drilling rigs, um, on the causeway, and in Greek, and that will continue to improve into January, as they take soil bores for the new bridge.
So the service, the base of the water, there, uh, purpose of the station, drive pipe.
Uh, what they're doing is they're just taking the soil, soil bores to design the pipeline, but they're still working to reach a design, yes, or.
So, uh, for those in the general public that, that may, uh, as a public here, this is, uh, hardship for the, uh, the, uh, prioritize because we lose. some of the major things that we talked about, the, the bridge, uh, uh, you know, the.
I think actually a little higher than that, they're still working on the final one there.
Yeah, way above the floods that we see. I can believe, also maybe it's the high trail, or something, something of that nature, but When we're out, soon, it's from the end, doesn't matter, we just begin, it's, it might be, you know, it's gonna be a loop. If they make it, you'll see a high one. I love it. But that said, is there a question by, uh, proceed? I don't think there's any after, I don't think. I can find a question to, uh, see. If a question made, second, if we continue to, if I can, if we break through, if you have a question. I can't, I can't say. Yes, matter of fact, you have to wait. But I, I agree with that.
We have to call it the New New Bridge.
The New New Bridge. The New, the New New Bridge.
From 1929.
All right, so, uh, you have a second on that? Okay, you have the motion made and seconded, okay, so Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by.
Okay. Members of council, we were having some audio problems with the playback at home, so we have switched the microphones to voice activated in an attempt to correct that, so don't have to push the button for the rest of the meeting.
Next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a regional memorandum of agreement for the regional groundwater mitigation program.
Okay. Uh, this program has been around since 2000, and this program is intent, is a regional program largely funded by the Water Works in the Hampton Roads area, and it, the intent of the program is to provide technical support to the Water Works and therefore to everybody who uses the Water Works, um, as they deal with groundwater issues. Groundwater is getting to be a bigger and bigger issue in the area, um, there's a higher demand according to the DEQ models than there is actual supply. This program provides that technical and support that our Water Works needs to ensure that we have the option of using groundwater as one of our raw water sources. And just so you do know, Newport News Water Works does maintain facilities that pump groundwater and does use groundwater, um, as part of our drinking water supply. So this has been, this is a resolution to authorize continuing with the program.
Questions? Not seeing anybody prepared with a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a regional memorandum of agreement on the regional groundwater mitigation program.
Second. A motion made and seconded, we go forward with this resolution, questions or comments? King, none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
The last item under new business is a resolution making appointment of various boards and commissions. Somebody prepared with a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making the following appointments to various boards and commissions for the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority, Jay Rand, and as an alternate, Howard T. Jones. Their terms will expire December 31st, 2020. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. John Rattet, whose term will expire March 31st, 2017. For the Economic Development Authority, Katie L. Patrick, whose term will expire March 31st, 2020. For the Architecture Board, William B. Price Jr. and Robert J. Cox, their terms will expire December 31st, 2019. And for the School Board in the Weston Precinct, Michelle B. Sheeler, whose term will expire June 30th, 2017.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A second. Okay, a motion made and seconded, is there a question?
There is a question.
Okay.
Is Mr. Wheeler being appointed as the alternate?
No, he's, he's, he's the member. I said Jones was the alternate. Randy is a member and Mr. Jones is alternate.
Okay.
Well, we were, what we were looking at is, that's not what.
In that pamphlet, there was a request, or a suggestion, that Mr. Green would be appointed as the alternate, and this.
What is, was behind the request, um, because quite honestly, Mr. Jones goes more often than I do. It, we can, we're fine either way.
Which would you prefer? Because we can make it either.
I don't have a strong feeling, we did recommend recognizing that Tom is our most frequent, making him the permanent, but, um, if the council would prefer doing the other.
Well, I'll modify my motion and then switch those.
Okay.
Randy, the alternate.
So same motion, but you're gonna use Tom Jones as the primary and Randy as the backup, right? Okay?
I'm just curious on this, is this with the new council coming in and some of us leaving, is this a vote that has to be done tonight, or can this vote be done with the new council coming in, since they'll be working more hand in hand with these folks, especially the school board appointment?
Well, my feeling on this, and I didn't want to leave a gap on the school board, I would prefer the council, uh, backfill that, because, as you know, the school board's gonna walk in in January, and they're gonna walk right into budget season, and I wanted whoever that was going to be to have some time, some runtime. I feel like, uh, the two board bank applications that you had, either one of them could have done spectacular.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So I'm, I'm, I feel like having a gap there just because of the election is, is not the way to go.
Well, after the newspaper article, I think we ended up with seven, eight applicants.
All right, any other questions? Okay, if not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to one.
Okay, very well. So then, uh, comments on the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, only two thanks. One, I just want to thank everyone that was involved in any way, including simply going to and enjoying a Christmas parade.
to and enjoying a Christmas parade. Special thing that we do, and our community embraces it, and you all, in fact, embrace it.
And act as.
As judges. It's a, it's a neat thing, but just because we do it every year doesn't mean we're any less thankful for the hard work of all the people involved. And just lastly, on behalf of the staff, just want to say, acknowledge and say thank you to Councilman Vernal and Councilman Heer. Appreciate everything that you have done in partnership with the staff over the last four years, and to Mrs. Crawford in her absence. We will miss you all. Just forward to the new folks, we will, we will miss you just as much as we. All hands, sir. Thank you. Bud?
Well, I'd just like to tell my outgoing councilman that I really am, and I'm looking forward to working with the new. And I think the city made some.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
That was pretty much what I was gonna say, except one other thing. I was honored to represent the city at the 75th World War II Veterans Appreciation Event that we did in conjunction with Yorktown at your call last Thursday. Our mayor proclaimed eight December as World War II Veteran Appreciation Day for the city. And we gave petitions to all of York and Pecosin, or I'm sorry, proclamations to the York-Pecosin veterans of World War II. And just for general information, there are at least eight who still live here among us today, and they inspire us on a daily basis just by their lives and what they were willing to give up and sacrifice for what they did in World War II. So just want to mention that. And then what Bud said about old council and incoming council members, really enjoyed working with the people here, thought we made an excellent team, and I think wonderful choices coming in. And Merry Christmas to everybody. That's all.
All right, I'm gonna step out of order here, 'cause I'll let the guys going off speak last. So Councilman Green.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the volunteer fire and rescue for inviting us to their Christmas party. It was well done, it was a lot of fun. Carrie's wife Barb won a frying pan. The first meeting, he wears a hat too, we don't know she used it. Like to remind everybody that we have a community food drive going on at the Farm Fresh, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from nine to three. Please come out and donate food, it's gonna go to our local food pantry. And then Friday, they'll be going to the schools, pick up what they've collected at the schools, and the Pecoson Education Foundation is offering a prize to each class that donates the most food, and it's a free pizza party, so that'll be a good incentive for them. Also, remind everybody of the food distribution here in the city next Tuesday, tomorrow, but the 20th, it's a week early this time because of Christmas. It'll be from 10 to 1, Old City Hall. And to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy prosperous New Year.
Much. Councilman Vernal.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all members of the council, such a collegial group, it's been such a pleasure to work with everybody. And I also want to especially thank the city staff for all of the stuff given from, from Randy and Judy and Vicki and all the department heads and so forth. Couldn't have asked for better information, always with a smile, even sometimes added to their workload slightly, slightly. But I really appreciate that, and it's been just a real privilege and pleasure to serve, and I'll miss doing that, but I wish our new council members all the love in the world. I'm sure you might enjoy your experience.
Thank you very much. Councilman Heer?
Yeah, I was kinda hoping, for old time's sakes, that for audience and visitors, Councilman -elect Andrews would've come up and spoke to us a little bit. Actually, it was good, I'm so excited about you guys that are all coming on board. It's, it's an eye-opening experience, and you all are wonderful people and so concerned about the community, I know y'all are gonna do a fantastic job. As Dr. Vernal said, cannot say enough about this city staff. It's, I know I wore them out on a lot of things, a lot of times calling a lot and forgetting a few things, but they were always helping me out any way they could, and like Dr. Vernal said, it's every department head. Anytime you called, anytime you needed, anytime someone asked, you were giving that information, you were giving, you were giving it very quickly, and you could always rely on it. And that starts with Randy at the top. Council, we, we sit here and we look at, listen what you guys have, what y'all bring to the table, some wonderful recommendations, and that's how we basically make these decisions that affect every single citizen in this community. So the information is wonderful. A lot of, a lot of things were accomplished here in four years, it's hard to believe four years is coming and gone this quick, and I just kinda jotted down a couple of things I was really happy to have been part of. Retirement benefits, phenomenal. The housing projects that we've approved that will have such a big impact on the school system, we hope, and I believe it will, which has a, it's a trickle-down thing, which has an impact and effect on our youth programs, our softball, soccer, football, baseball, the whole nine yards, it's such, such an impact when these projects all come together. The breakwater is another big deal, and I'm glad that's out there, I know they're working on that out there today, it's absolutely a beautiful place. I do hope some ways that they can find a way to attack some of these people, make a pair of a couple dollars that are coming from out of the city to park down there at that boat ramp, recover some of our money, but the museum, helping the museum out is great. And to the new people coming in, I think it's so important, and that we realize, and that you realize, that the decisions you're making don't need to be made for tomorrow, they need to be made for the day after tomorrow and further on out. We need to do, make things and make impacts that affect the community long-term. And the one thing that will probably shock some people, to be honest, on the Walmart project, had, had we had a different infrastructure and things been a little bit different, my vote might have been a little bit different. I just don't think we could have handled it at the time the way it was. But we gotta keep our eyes open for, for projects like that that'll pay dividends to the city, but we gotta make sure the infrastructure's there long-term. And of course, the boat tax got away from me, I regret that, but maybe one day that'll be looked at again, I'm not sure if they ever recover those dollars, but all in all, it's been a very rewarding experience, I've worked with some very talented individuals up here that bring a lot of skills, skill sets much larger than mine, and I learned an awful lot from them, and so for that, God, I'm very appreciative. And thank y'all.
Thank you very much. I'll close out by saying that while I remain, I will, I will miss Councilman Vernal, I'll miss you for your, for your experience, which far, you know, it's something to have a former school superintendent on your city council for when we talk about school budgets, and to have your counsel on that, much appreciated. Councilman Heer, for you, all of the, the life that you breathed into each and every issue that took on, your passion for the city are greatly appreciated. And Tracy, who was unable to join us only because her, her son is in, unexpectedly in the hospital, for her thought process and what she brought to the city was just phenomenal, and, and he kinda grew to, she, she always talks about sitting between you two, I don't know why I'd wanna sit there, but she talks about that that was an honor sitting between the vice mayor and Bud, so, so I don't know exactly what all y'all told her, but it's, it's all good. I wish the city a Merry Christmas. I mean what I said at the tree lighting ceremony, I mean what I say in my prayer here this evening, that this Christmas season is a time to reach out and meet new people. That includes neighbors that could just be on your street that you've never met before. You will find needs, sometimes in places that you do not expect, and my one wish for the holiday season is that you will reach out to somebody in your neighborhood, introduce a new friend, or recognize a new need. It doesn't matter, either one is good. So please do that this holiday season so that we can become even more as a city. I think, council, we've done great things, I've, I've really enjoyed working with this mix of folks. I also look forward to, to working with the new members. It will be an exciting time, it'll, it'll be, start out a little bumpy as we learn how to work with each other, but it started the same way with this group. So I look forward to that, look forward to the continued service of our city staff, what a great job y'all have done for us in this year. By no small means, that financial audit to kinda top off the end of the year, just means that once again, many, many years that I've been here, that the one thing that we have far and above any city around is a very solid financial base from which to make decisions. And that cannot go unstressed, you only have to look at some of our neighboring cities who've had financial issues, realize that it's easier to make decisions when you trust the numbers than don't trust the numbers. And trusting the numbers has been something that far and beyond has been something that this staff has been able to bring to the city for the last, since I've been on council for the last 20 years. So it's, it's, it makes our job much easier. But to all those that leave us, farewell, I will tell you that, just for general announcement, we, I am going to bring the council folks that'll be leaving us, as well as the new council that will be joining us, to a celebration of that, of basically the departure of the old and the incoming of the new in the early January. And we will be getting together at one of the recent Pecoson businesses and the new meeting facility that we have here in the city. Look forward to that, it is a celebration, and I look forward to doing that exactly with all of you. So with that said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.